Okay. What?
I'm sorry.
Commissioner Zubor, would you call the role, please?
Certainly, Commissioner Perkins.
Here.
Commissioner Graham Hudek.
Early by one minute, I would like to impress
So noted.
... the audience. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Graham Hudek is here, and Commissioner Engel is here. Chairman Green is here.
Present.
And Commissioner Zubor is here. I wasn't ready for that, I guess.
You weren't?
Ellen O'Conne is not here, and Sue Dotson is not here.
All right, and of course, we have our staff of planners, Jeff Goulet and Angela Willeshovitz. Welcome, and welcome to you all out here, too, and welcome to those who eventually will be seeing our tape at home. We have an agenda tonight of four items at this point. But before we get to that, we have minutes from our June 5th meeting. Do I hear a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved.
Support.
All right, I've got a motion by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Perkins to accept those minutes from June 5th. Any further discussion? I have just one correction to it, and that was that it lists Angela as being present as staff, and we need to correct that. She was not here.
Angela wasn't at the last meeting?
No, she wasn't at the last meeting, but she was listed as present, staff present. So just a minor correction there. So...
Good catch.
So we need to amend the...
Ah, I accept that amendment to the motion.
Okay. By your support?
Support.
Okay. By voice vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, as I said, we've got an agenda of four items tonight. Any further additions from the commission to that agenda? Okay, I have one. We're going to add item seven, because we need to establish a subcommittee for the master plan update. It's going to be a committee of three people, a maximum. We'll probably meet a couple of times, but we'll get to that discussion later as to the why and whatnot at the end. Okay, so that means we're going to amend the agenda. Do I hear a motion to accept the amended agenda?
So moved.
Is there anything from staff that we need to add? All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Zubor to amend the agenda, and we've got support by Commissioner Engel. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so be it. Our first item tonight is a public hearing, and let me say that public hearings are just that. We do require, or actually, the project requires that we open for the public their opportunity to speak on a particular agenda item, if you so choose. If you do, we ask that you come to the podium and give your name and address, and fill out one of our forms for staff, and for the record, speak into the microphone, and, you know, you have about 90 seconds or so to say what you have to say, and then we go from there. So we welcome you to do that. Comments are always welcome like that. So with that said, our first agenda item tonight is a public hearing. It's the Valvoline Lube Center, Michigan Avenue, where we're considering a special land use for an automobile service station. This property we're talking about is located north of Michigan Avenue between Canton Center and Beck Road. Angela, could you tell us more about that, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The project sponsor proposes to locate a quick oil change facility, as you see on the aerial photo there, on the north side of Michigan Avenue. It's located between the Crossroads Village Shopping Center and the newly, fairly newly constructed little shopping center where Jimmy John's is, next to the Toyota dealer there on Michigan Avenue. The parcel's approximately one acre. Auto service establishments may be permitted in the C-3 zoning district as special land uses per the zoning ordinance. With your packet, you should have received the responses to the special land use criteria. All necessary public utilities are available to the site. Approval of the request will not result in a residential area being surrounded by non-residential development. The proposal is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The property is Zone C-3 and designated as general commercial on the future land use map. As I mentioned, auto repair establishments are permitted with special land use approval in this zoning district. Possible detrimental effects may include noise and light from daily operations. Adherence to the landscaping and lighting standards will serve to mitigate any such effects. The hours of operation, as indicated by the project sponsor, are 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. daily. The signs drain forms the western property line of this parcel. The concept plan was provided in your packet and demonstrates that the site can be developed and conform to ordinance requirements regarding setbacks to water courses and floodplains. A market analysis was also included in your packet. The conceptual site plan is shown here. A cross connection will be made to the Jimmy John's Plaza there on the east. The applicant was encouraged to design a building with an appearance similar to that existing building. The colored version of the architectural elevations was included with your packet. This is special land use only, so details will be worked out with the site plan submission for these items. Staff recommends approval of the special land use request. I believe, is someone here to speak on that? Okay. The project sponsors are here to answer your questions.
Thank you, Angela. Would you care to... I'm sorry.
I said, "You're welcome."
Okay. I didn't know if you were done. Would you care to add anything that Angela has said? And would you be available for any questions?
Sure. I'm Alhoomud Vision Construction. I'm the project manager. Mr. Todd here, it's actually the owner of the Valvoline. Our engineer architect hasn't shown up yet, so I'll do my part to answer whatever questions that you do have. So pretty much, we're proposing to build a Valvoline oil change, pretty much mimic the, I believe it's a Jimmy John's? Is it Jimmy John's next door? So the actual architectural design will flow properly with the, that's Mr. Alba... With the actual design of the flow on Michigan Avenue, so I'm sure the parents will be state-of-the-art, match whatever design that needed to be copied or portrayed on your guys' standard will be happy to do. So whatever else we could answer for you, we're all for.
Thank you very much. Now Angela, even though this is a special land use consideration only, because it's been presented with the elevations and the conceptual site plan, comments can be made about that, right? In terms of that?
Sure.
Okay. With that, do I hear a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Support.
We've got a motion to open the public hearing by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Perkins. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let's say 7:10, a public hearing is open. I'm going to go to the audience and ask if there are any comments, questions, concerns about this project.
Mr. Chairman, I move to close the public hearing.
Support.
All right, we've got a motion to close the public hearing by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Perkins. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so the public hearing is closed at 7:11. All right. From the commission, let's start down with Commissioner Graham Hudek.
Oh, okay, thank you. I was interested in looking at your market research. I was looking at some of that, and, I mean, there's eight oil change shops in Canton right now, and you're saying at various prices. So why do you think, what would be unique of yours? Are you going to start your price point?
I would think, Mr. Blue, the actual owner would probably fall more into this category. Yeah, sure, go ahead. Price point, as far as what you...
How you doing?
Hello, welcome.
My name first?
Yes, please.
Name's Talab Balla. Go ahead with any questions.
So with your market research, there's already eight oil change places in Canton, and why do you think yours is unique, and where would you start your prices at?
Price-wise, basically, all the new cars are permitted to get special oil, like semi-synthetic Durban oil, and basically, the prices are, every oil change is the same price. So it's $49.99 at the start. Every ticket is like $50 for a price on a newer vehicle.
So you're at $49.99, you said?
Yes.
So...
Starting price.
You're going to be more expensive than most of them, then?
Yeah, that's for the semi-synthetic. For the regular oil change, it'd be $29.99.
What makes yours more unique than the others?
You know, on Michigan Avenue, I don't know if, I'm very familiar with Michigan Avenue. On the strip of Michigan Avenue, there's a Panzo down the street, and there's no Valvoline whatsoever, and there's a lot of Valvoline customers that do go through that, go through that intersection on Michigan Avenue. So I was thinking that would be a very good idea to put a Valvoline there, because it would be busy. It's like Burger King and McDonald's, that's the two mostly used oil change. And the ones that you're saying ate oil changes, some of them are dealers, so they're not fast lanes. So technically, I'll be the third one on Michigan Avenue, if it's between the Panzo on Michigan Avenue and...
Victory.
The Fast Track, I think, or Victory Lanes, yeah, I'm sorry.
Did you do a demographic search? I think that's what she's asking.
Yes.
And what did it come out with?
How many vehicles per day, you mean?
Yeah.
It says 47, but that's like according to the count car that's passing on Michigan Avenue.
Right.
So it takes years to get to 47 a day, you know? I've been doing this for a very long time, so it takes years to be like 47 cars, 50 cars every single day. Probably when we first open, it's going to be like between, roughly between 10 to 20. It just depends, you know, how we start. That's how our business starts, basically. And then just, you know, keep treating people good, and you always have repeat customers.
I noticed you said that more women than men. Is there a reason for that, did you find, or you're just...
No, actually, the research found that, not me.
Yeah, the research, I'm just wondering, did more women answer the phone, or just...
Maybe, that's what I was thinking.
Everyone else hung up?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I'm all set, Greg.
Commissioner Zubor?
I'm all set.
Commissioner Perkins?
Set.
Okay. I only have questions, should we approve this in terms of, like, land usage? It's a weird-shaped property, I mean, everybody will agree to that, and I quite honestly didn't think much was going to be able to be functional in that little triangle. But having said that, looking at your flow, are you sure you're going to be able to turn cars in on the right and then go into those stalls? I mean, that's a pretty stiff U-turn to make that happen.
It's definitely enough room, yeah.
Graphics are one thing, but actually, your competitor, your proposed competitor, anyway, Victory has the same scenario, and in fact, I just went there last week, and it was kind of weird making that turnaround. But, I mean, it's doable, it's very doable, but it's like, okay, if you had a whole lot of traffic at one time, would that be a problem? Yes, sir? Do you want to answer that?
Hi, my name is Ziad Alba. I'm the engineer representing the project. As far as the turning, if you have seen that those boxes showing the cars, they're turned by 20. Car is not, it's barely 7 by 14 or something. And we even put a space in between.
Okay.
It's not like we are trying to congest that corner. We had a, even that loading and loading that we show, we have spoke with Angela about it, that could be optional. We don't have, these days, they come in in a small van, you know, to drop things off, but because of the ordinance, so we had to show that. Actually, that corner will be very, very clear. The way we did this, the more open space in the back, we're trying to control the dumpster enclosure, that's why we have that wide entry to the back. So actually, we're trying, and actually, even on top of that, we opened a little, on the west side, on the left-hand side, we opened a little escape lane, so we take the congestion out of the corner.
Okay. All right, that answers that question. The other ones have to do with a couple of semantics of the property itself, for example, at the Michigan Avenue level. I don't know, Angela, do we require trees of any nature? I know we're not buffering against anything there, but it is a street, and do we require any level of street tree penetration?
Not street trees, but road frontage planted, yes.
Road frontage types of things? So if we go forward with this, that would be a requirement they'd have to meet?
Yes, this is just concept, so...
I understand, I understand.
Particulars will, but, yes.
Okay, all right.
Road frontage landscaping.
And sidewalk and all that would come automatically?
He shows the sidewalk on the...
Well, we are showing the, see, this is a very unusual sidewalk, because it goes at a dead end, because there's the head walls for the creek, but we have proposed that as was, you know, asked for. We did propose it, and we're showing that five-foot length sidewalk in the front.
Okay.
And on top of that, here's the, that's the landscape in drawing, showing the puffer with the trees and the shrubs, and the same thing, buffer, you know, protecting the creek.
So what is there now at that creek?
Heinz Creek, yes.
There is a view of the actual landscape, I don't know if you want to just...
We'll review that at site plan stage, so...
Trees and...
Oh, I see, I got you, okay.
So it was already processed, and we went through it at site.
So the drain that's going through, I believe that's a signs drain, is that crossable with the sidewalk? Is that...
They would have to investigate that with MDOT, when MDOT widened...
I, yes.
When MDOT widened Michigan Avenue and put in the boulevard there, I don't know how wide the culvert is on the edge of the road in terms of whether there's room to cross the sidewalk there adjacent to the head wall or not. They'll have to investigate that.
Sometimes they just turn around...
Yeah, because, you know, that would ultimately be a burden on either the township or MDOT to complete it. We're having them put in a sidewalk, and then it ends there.
Right. But anytime then they do improvements to Michigan Avenue, then we can have MDOT finish off the connection to the sidewalk between the shopping center and the site. You know, I mean, that's, when we get to site plan, we can discuss whether or not to extend the sidewalk to the head wall or not, and they can investigate with MDOT when they start doing their MDOT permitting, whether or not it's possible, and they can let you know at site plan stage when they start getting with MDOT. Because they're going to have to start giving this to MDOT to show their driveway locations and end up MDOT permitting for that. So when they go through that process, we'll know better what's going on with the sidewalk, so...
Similar situation. They'll probably do a pre-plan, and what we need to be, because they're going to meet me there, and they're going to figure out exactly what's my responsibility and their responsibility to make it obviously functionable.
Yeah. Okay, all right, thank you very much for that. And of course, my last concern is that the height of the parapets, the heights of the building itself would sufficiently hide any rooftop units from view all the way around?
Or we'll be screened.
Those would be my concerns.
And when you bring the site plan back, when you have your building further designed, you'll need to show a screen detail on the elevations for the site plan.
I think we have shown a line where the roof line is.
I know, but we'll need to see the actual design details for that screen.
Yeah, we'll get to that, no problem.
Don't be funny. Okay, yes, thank you very much. Yes, you have another comment?
Thanks, thank you. Just one more thing. We had talked about at the joint planning study session about trying to move things more, parking lots in the back of buildings, to bring buildings up. Is that a possibility here to make the area...
Not with this size of site, and we're trying to connect in with the driveway next door and their parking lot. It's only basically, there's only like 10 parking spaces. So if we move the building, they have to meet the front setback. So the building barely meets the front setback the way it is, so they can't move the building forward any.
And what is a front setback?
85 feet. So, like along Ford Road in the central business district, we have a 50-foot setback, a 785-foot setback. So that allows those buildings to come closer to Ford Road and to put, you know, the parking behind, like the out parcels and things, like the AT&amp;T and GameStop and those outlaw buildings, the parking is behind or beside, and there's no parking in the front. And that was intentional along Ford Road within the DDA area. Along Michigan Avenue, you've got a high, you know, a high-speed corridor, and small businesses need the exposure and the convenient parking up front, especially for these small buildings. Plus, we're already aligning something that, we're trying to align something that already exists next door. Ideally, this site would have come in with that site and been developed as one site, but that's not the way the sale and the ownership of that property happened. So this was kind of a leftover piece, actually, from the shopping center. These, this was three parcels at one time that were narrow strips that went all the way up into the shopping center property. When the original property owner sold those, the north half of those to the shopping center where the pond is for the larger shopping center, he retained the frontage of those. There was a house on one parcel here in the middle at one time, so this is a little leftover piece, so it's like a little infill. So to try to get something to fit in here that's functional is what we're trying to deal with, and I think Ziad did as best he could, getting it as functional as he could for any type of use, whether it was an office, oil changer, or whatever, so...
Yeah, I would agree. I think it was kind of a strange parcel of land that you've done pretty well putting all of those features in there. I'm okay with this as a special land use. I don't know how the rest of the commission is, but I expect there to be a...
Motion?
Motion?
If you'd like me to make a motion?
I'd like you to, like to do.
I'd like to make a motion. I move to recommend approval of the special land use permit, I'm sorry, the special land use request to locate an auto repair establishment in the C-3 zoning district on parcel 131-990013701. Based upon the findings that, the proposal is consistent with the future land use map of the comprehensive plan and with the zoning ordinance. All necessary public utilities are available to the site. Approval of the request will not result in a small residential area being surrounded by non-residential uses. Okay. My heart just restarted. And detrimental effects can be adequately mitigated through conformance with zoning ordinance standards for landscaping, lighting, and natural areas.
Support.
All right, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Perkins. Any further discussion on that motion? That you can remember?
You'll see it back again at site plan stage.
Okay. Commissioner Zubor, would you call the vote on this motion, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Graham Hudek?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Zubor, yes, and Chairman Green?
Yes. Okay, the motion goes forward, and their next up would be, what's their next up?
Board of trustees meeting for July 25th.
Gotcha, okay. Good luck with that. Our next public hearing is the Bickford Minor PDD. We're considering this minor planned development district for the property which is located west of Canton Center Road and north of Ford Road. Jeff, could you tell us more?
Yes, sir. This is a proposed minor planned development for a 60-unit assisted living facility on 3.45 acres located west side of Canton Center Road, just south of the Fraser Bicycle site on Canton Center. The overall site's 7.15 acres. They're looking to purchase the northern 3.45 acres for their project, so the planned development only includes the 3.45 acres. The property is currently Zone C-2 Commercial. The proposed use as an assisted living facility is not necessarily a commercial use, it's considered a more of a residential or institutional use. So that's why they're proposing a planned development. They feel this is a good location for the site within the Canton Center corridor, surrounded by a lot of other medical uses in the area, a lot of office-type uses. They feel that the single-story brick building provides a good transition from our commercial district to the west where the drain is, and over to the existing subdivision lots, rather than having commercial backup to the existing, you know, portion of Sunflower subdivision to the west. The, essentially, part of, you know, part of the planned development is they have to show that there's a definite benefit. What is the township achieving that we wouldn't achieve under standard zoning? And part of that is the transition. So under a planned development, this would be limited to the one-story assisted living use pursuant to the development agreement. They are providing cross-access to the north and south for future connection. Part of the benefit is traffic generation would be projected to be less than typical for office or commercial, especially at peak hour, or any other use developed by ride on the site. The, you know, this would, basically, part of the other part of this is fulfills an unfilled market need in the community for senior housing. Their market study shows that we're woefully underserved in that area right now, based on our demographics and what the future domain is going to be for senior housing and assisted living. And we've got Mr. Eby from Bickford, organization is here to answer any questions you might have. I'll just bring up the conceptual site plan. Let's see. Site plan shows the area to the south is undeveloped. It shows where the future connection will be along Canton Center to provide access to this future site. The access is designed currently as a cross from, I think, Fox Point Drive, or Fox Point Drive is down here, but this is opposite an existing, you know, driveway on Canton Center. Canton Center is a five-lane road with a center turn lane, so there shouldn't be any conflicts, as long as they're aligned correctly, and Wayne County ultimately look at that for alignment and left-turning movements. Basically, they have some parking in the front and some parking to the side, but the building is fairly close to the road. It's a one-story residential-style building with courtyards in between to service, to provide some recreational outside areas for the seniors. There is a fire lane around the building. Due to the orientation of the building, there's going to be a fire lane around the building, but they're not encroaching necessarily on the drain at all. The drain runs along, the Fellows Creek drain runs along the property line, so there's basically easements on both sides. There's easements on the properties within Sunflower, and there's also part of the drain easement will be on this property. So the Fellows Creek kind of meanders through there a little bit. One of the concerns has been stormwater. Mr. Eby met with some of the property owners that have bought this before the public hearing. The proposed stormwater system is underground. We'll get more details at site plan stage on that, but based on the way that's designed, it's designed to basically control the flow of water into the drain. Well, right now, it's uncontrolled. The restriction into the drain is at an agricultural rate, and so the water's held back in a stormwater system and released at a slow rate to prevent, you know, flooding into the drain. So that's all basically controlled by Wayne County ordinance in terms of, you know, the volume of water that can be discharged, those kinds of, what kind of restrictors are on the pipe, and those kinds of things. So the engineer can answer those questions at site plan as we get that far, but right now, from a conceptual site plan standpoint, it's just shown as an underground pond system. So the service areas for the building are basically tucked into this corner, you know, down here where most of the public entrance will be up front, so the staff parking and the service areas will be back in this corner. I'll ask Mr. Eby and his representatives to come up, and they can describe and tell you a little bit more about their company and what they provide in terms of services, and then I can bring up the rest of the plans, you know, as they need to, so... Richard?
Thank you, Jeff. Mr. Eby? Okay, and while he's coming up, do I hear a motion to open the public hearing?
I'm moved.
Support.
You guys are consistent here. Motion by...
I was waiting for Craig.
... by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Perkins. Open the public hearing at 7:30. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to present our proposal to you this evening. As you mentioned, my name is Richard Eby. I'm with Bickford Senior Living. We're a family-owned company. We're out of Olatha, which is a suburb of Kansas City. We've been in this business for 26 years now. My brother started the company 26 years ago to fill a family need. He'd just sold his Caterpillar dealership. His mother-in-law was failing, and so he decided to venture into this new business of assisted living, and she became the first resident, and her name was Mary Bickford, and thus the name Bickford. They named the company in honor of her. We have about 55 buildings that we operate, manage, and own. We have seven of them. Most of them are located in the central portion of the United States, everywhere from Kansas, of course, up through to Virginia, pretty well concentrated in Illinois, Michigan, Indiana, Ohio. We currently have seven buildings in Michigan. We have them in, two of them in Lansing, one of them in Portage, Battle Creek... We have them in, two of them in Lansing, one of them in Portage, Battle Creek, Midland, Saginaw. We have one under construction in Shelby Township. We've been going through a period right now of, of modest expansion. We're trying to build about three per year. And, uh, we identified the Canton market, market as being a very, uh, attractive market to us. It meets our demographics, uh, we look really forward to being a part of this community. Uh, we think that our proposal, uh, provides a lot of benefit, uh, with respect to this site. You know, we're often the transition between commercial use and residential use. We're a buffer for so many reasons. And, uh, in this particular case, uh, we have the pretty heavy traffic there along Canton Center Road. We have a residential to, to the west of us, and then we have more commercial north and south. So, here again, we serve as a buffer. You notice the, the very strong line of, there's a, quite a line of trees along the west property line, uh, that will be maintained and serve as a buffer for, for the residential neighborhood. Uh, as you saw in the site plan, uh, notice that all the parking is up front and away from the residential, uh, use, uh, to the, uh, we have interior courtyard, so our residents, rather than having to be out and wandering, uh, they have their own interior courtyards. Uh, the building itself serves as a screen for noise and light, uh, from the more commercial use along, uh, Canton Center Road. You know, we're a very, very low-impact use. We produce very little traffic. Uh, most of our traffic is in off-peak hours. It's when family members come to see the loved ones. You know, trash pickup is only like two to three times a week. So, uh, we're a very low-impact use as far as traffic is concerned. Noise, and we don't produce smells. You know, our residents are really quiet, and, uh, so from that standpoint, we think we're a very, uh, would be a very attractive use. Also, the building itself is a very residential building. It's a single-story, uh, uh, a single-story building, uh, wood frame construction, residential roof line, uh, lot of brick and stone and, uh, masonry materials. The siding is hardy siding, uh, cementitious siding, and we have asphalt, uh, residential style architectural, uh, shingles. You notice the dormers, uh, uh, it also provided residential feel to it. We have, uh, shutters at the windows, and we think it's a very, very attractive building. So, um, uh, I guess if you have any other questions, I'd be glad to answer them. We have the engineers here this evening to answer any question.
Is this, is this use, uh, welcome, and thank you very much for your explanation and history. I appreciate that very much. Um, is this use gonna be primarily for independent seniors?
No, it'll be for a, there'll be 44 units of assisted living and 16 units of memory care. In the, uh, site plan, Jeff, if we could pop back to the site plan, chance?
Site plan layout.
Just a conceptual site plan, so I can show them where the courtyards were. Uh, the larger courtyard up here, the main portion of the building, uh, you, you see it's, looks like two squares put together with a hollow in the center. The larger court, the larger, uh, building itself is the assisted living. The, the other smaller unit down here is the 16 units of memory care. That's a secured unit. It has its own interior courtyard, uh, a, a lot of different programming for those individuals with those special memory needs. You know, our typical resident is a, as a person probably about, uh, 85 years old, has needs for activities of daily living, like, you know, they may need help bathing or grooming or need their meals prepared, so, uh, just, we, I think we provide strong service for the community.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Um, if you would be available for any questions, that would be great. I'm gonna go to the, we did open the public hearing, correct?
Did.
Okay.
7:30.
I'm going to, um, ask if anyone from the audience wants to make a comment. All right, the lady in the back, if you wanna come on up, and I'll get to you after that, sir?
Do I have to fill out the orange paper?
Yes, please.
Yes.
Thank you for letting me come and talk. My name is Tammy Farley. Um, this directly impacts us because our house is pretty much right behind it. Um, I have a few concerns. Um, first of all, the big thing I'm concerned about is water. Um, I've lived in this house almost 20 years, and I have seen that creek overflow its banks regularly, especially when we have rain like we had the last couple days. Um, a couple years ago, that creek was literally 10 feet from my house. So, I am very worried about the water draining off. Obviously, they're gonna have to take lots of the vegetation out of that area, which suck up water. Um, so I'm concerned about the water and the amount of water that's gonna be going into that creek, since my house is very close. We already have issues with, um, problems with our basement because of all of the water that's in that area, not only from the creek, but from the wetlands that's behind us. Um, so I'm very concerned about that. Um, I hope what they say is true, that if they do do this, that they are gonna leave those trees along the creek bed there, 'cause not only do they suck up water, but second of all, I really don't wanna see this out my kitchen window, because what am I gonna be seeing? I'm gonna be seeing a trash dumpster back there in the back of that building. Um, so I'm not gonna see the front of the building, I'm gonna see the back, which isn't gonna look very pretty. Um, the other question, the other thing I have to say about the trash dumpster is the kind of facility that this is, there is gonna be smells coming from that trash dumpster. That's just the nature of the beast when you have elderly people. Can't help that. Not too keen about that either. Um, the other thing, trash removal. I know a lot of those businesses along Ca- Canton Center, the trash people are coming in there at 6 o'clock in the morning. That is very loud, and it does wake us up. Um, the other thing, as far as, uh, traffic is concerned, Canton Center is a nightmare between 3:00 and 5:00. Anybody that's driven down there knows that, that the traffic's horrible. Um, so adding more traffic, trying to get turn and left and everything else is gonna make that even worse. Plus, you're gonna have the workers at this facility, I don't know how many employees are gonna be there, but they're gonna be coming, I work in a hospital, so I know that the, the different times of the shifts. So you're gonna have employees coming through there either really early or really late, 'cause you're gonna have the day shift and the evening shift coming at 6:00 AM and midnight. So that's gonna be making noise. Um, the other, the other thing I was thinking about was light, um, that obviously there's gonna have to be lights around the building, which is gonna add a lot of ambient light to our neighborhood. So there, again, I would beg them to leave the trees along the creek to kind of buffer that light. Um, let me see, anything else I wanted to say? Those are pretty much, oh, the other thing was, as far as traffic goes, you are gonna have family members coming and going, and you're also gonna have ambulances coming and going, just because of the nature of the facility. It's older people. They're gonna need ambulances sometimes coming and going, which that's, that's a big distraction, too. There's a lot of noise, a lot of light. Just the sirens alone will get everybody's dogs going crazy, but, so anyway, I just, those are just a few things I wanted to say. I do live right directly behind there, so if they wanted to talk to us at all, I would be happy to hear what they have to say, 'cause I am real concerned about what's gonna be in that spot, obviously, since I see it out my kitchen window.
Which lot are you on?
Um, we're in lot, if you bring back that lot picture, I can show you.
Here are the lot, here's the four lots here. You've got...
We're in the, we're in that corner.
Here?
Right there.
Okay, well, the dumpster, okay, is way down here. The dumpster's way down here in front of the building.
Okay.
Okay, so here's the, here's the dumpster pad, and there's gonna be nothing behind the building other than a fire lane. Here's the tree line that they're preserving from here to here.
Can I excuse you?
Anywhere from 40 to 60 feet of trees. Okay, so depending on where the fire lane needs to go. So the dumpster's up here, so all the parking is in, here's the building, south building line here. Okay, so all the parking is in front of the building, so all the lights will be on the Canton Center side of the building. So the only thing that'll be in the back of the building would be maybe some security lights over the doors. So that's the only lighting that'll be behind the building, 'cause there's no activity area behind the building. And that would be compared to like a, I mean, we have a lot of commercial uses along, along, uh, Canton Center that have service areas behind where you have pickup areas. So what we've tried to do, and I've tried to encourage them, to get all of the activity area between the building and Canton Center Road, so that the only thing that's going to, you know, be behind those trees are basically the backside of a residential one-story building, so, you know...
The thing about that, though, is the other businesses that are along Canton Center there are not a 24-hour operation.
Right, right, but this, this side of the...
That's gonna be a 24-hour operation, so there's gonna be people coming and going and...
Right, and that's why the park...
Ambulances and whatever, 24 hours a day.
Right, and that's why the parking's all up front in front of the building away from you. So the building now, actually, the building itself should act as a buffer for any activity along Canton Center Road, so whatever you're hearing now, you should actually hear probably somewhat less.
We can hear people in the parking lot at the bar across the street.
Right.
So, I work in a hospital. I know how noisy the employees are when we come and go from work, so we're gonna hear them out in the hot, out in the parking lot, I know it.
Right, but, you know, but from a commercial standpoint...
And just because of their shifts, you know, they're coming early in the morning and late at night. That's just the nature of a medical facility like that.
Are you, are you concerned that, that area behind the building is gonna have a lot of flow, um, one way or the other?
Not so much of traffic. I was wondering about the trash dumpster, which he said is over on the other side.
This is, so all the activity is basically to the east side of the building.
I was just more concerned. It's a 24-hour operation, so there's gonna be, you have elderly people there, so there's gonna be...
So essentially from, you know, for an ambulance...
There's gonna be stuff happening 24 hours a day.
Yeah, if an ambulance comes in, it's gonna come into the drop-off area here, 'cause this is the main entrance way up here. So it's gonna be, so all of that activity is gonna be to the east side of the building. So the building, the building wall itself will act as a buffer to you. Yeah, does it cut off all noise? No. But, you know, generally, ambulances aren't, you know, having their sirens going on in a residential area. They're not gonna have their siren on it until they're en route to someplace. Uh, usually, that's a quiet zone in a residential area, so, um, you know, so that, you know, probably the biggest impact and the impact that we've seen with, like, nursing homes and things, is shift change with employees talking in the parking lot. I'm sure Mr. Eby can control his employees in the parking lot, you know, if the, if the employee parking is out here. I mean, you're gonna be way up here, you're gonna be basically in the, the least impactful area of, of the site up here, if you're in the corner here. Um, I mean, I mean, that's, those are all concerns that the, that the developer needs to understand and make sure he takes into consideration when moving, when moving forward.
I think my biggest concern is water, 'cause like I said, I've had that creek 10 feet from my house, and so...
And that's Wayne County's responsibility, so...
The more water that goes through there, the more nervous I get, just now we have the wetlands back there, which even holds on to more water. So, we're seeing a lot of, our backyard is a muddy mess all the time back there because of all of that stuff going on back there.
When they get further on in the process, they'll have to submit their stormwater plans to Wayne County, and Wayne County will determine the amount of water that they're allowed to discharge from the site into the, into the drain. As I explained before, the premise of that is that they can't discharge any more water into the drain at, at a rate that, than what the agricultural rate is currently. So whatever that, what they call the runoff coefficient is from an engineering term, they'll be storing water from the, from their parking lot and their roofs into an underground tank. Okay? That tank can't discharge into the drain at more than what it's discharging right now at an agricultural, over-the-ground rate, you know, as it seeps in, you know, toward the, the thing. So, so Wayne County will look at that design and make sure that they meet all of the Wayne County design requirements for the underground storm system. So Wayne County is fully responsible for managing the storm permitting on this site with an underground system. So that's their, their responsibility.
And Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but in most cases where you've got a building and parking lot and the drainage plan is self-contained, or at least going into, let's say Canton's normal drainage system, you're actually potentially improving that scenario because you don't have a lot of the landmass water flowing back toward those houses, right?
I mean, the water's still going into the, is gonna go into the drain one way or another. It's a matter of when and how. So with the storm, with the stormwater guidelines, in some, in some cases...
But not into the creek.
In some cases, it will improve that. Not always, but it can't make it any worse.
Right.
So the guidelines won't allow any more water going into that creek faster than what it's going now. So part of it has to do with the rate it goes in and how much water goes in over a period of time. So Wayne County, the guidelines are, 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 the Wayne County storm guidelines are designed to hold that water back during a storm event, so all that water's not going into the creek at one time during a storm. So that water's held in the tank, and then it's slowly discharged into the creek as the creek can take it. So, you know, so it's, it's essentially designed to manage the flow of water into the natural drains and creeks. So, you know, as opposed to 20 years ago, you know, all the storm drains went directly into the creek with, you know, basically no restriction and no filtering or anything. This requires the water to be filtered and held back and discharged at a slow rate into the creek, so it, it manages the flow of water better off the site. So, it's more of a, it's an engineering function, and it's something that as we work through the site plan and through the engineering process and with Wayne County, we'll get a better understanding of, of how that works. But at this point, since they're not showing an above-ground system, you know, normally we get into site plan issues of where the pond is and how it's designed, but this is an underground system, so it'll be a more of a mechanical-type system, so...
Okay, and you brought up about the staff shift change. Uh, I'd like to ask Mr. Eby, how many people do you expect to be, uh, at work at any one shift or any one particular time?
Now, we have, uh, three shifts. Uh, maximum number of employees would be during the, and shift changes are at 7:00, 3:00, and 11:00. And at, at between 7:00 and 3:00, the maximum number you'd have would be about 15 staff members.
How many?
15.
15.
Yeah. Uh, the shift change in the late evening, like 11:00 o'clock, will be about five staff members on duty.
So, you're not talking a lot of coming and going there?
No. In fact, the, uh, the, the traffic study that we submitted, I think, had the peak hour traffic at, I think it was 10 or 11, 10 or 12 vehicles per hour, wasn't there?
Okay, and then, and then, um...
And it's not, and that wasn't at the, the normal afternoon peak. It's not at 5:00 o'clock. The peak hour is...
No, it's at 3:00.
It's at 3:00, okay.
Well, it says in your thing, it's between 3:00 and 4:00, but I don't know if you've driven down Canton Center between 3:00 and 5:00. It's a nightmare. The traffic is a nightmare down there.
And that's after school, that's out, so...
Right. Um, in terms of noise and stuff like that, you know, visitation is probably gonna be your biggest, biggest, um, movement, okay, in the front, but we're talking people visiting their relatives, and they're older, they're probably not gonna be visiting much after 9:00, right?
No. Our, the building is very, very quiet about 8:00.
Very quiet, right, okay.
A lot of residents go to bed at that time.
So it's a pretty quiet use.
As far as the trash pickup, we usually have the trash picked up twice, two to three times per week, and those are during, done during daylight hours. We don't want our, our residents disturbed either.
Right, okay. All right, sounds good, okay.
As far as the ambulances are concerned, uh, we did a, a survey of existing buildings and red light and siren calls. Average for a building this size would be about two per month.
Those are all accounted for. Those are good.
But aren't they required anyway to turn those off when, once they turn into the facility?
No, I can't say that.
Okay, all right, that, yeah, I mean, so you, you might have sirens anyway going up and down Canton Center to other, other, you know, calls, but, um, I guess, I guess the, the bottom line is, and I hope that these answer, uh, at least some of your questions, the bottom line is this is a pretty, pretty quiet use for this property, uh, because this is zoned, is it C3?
C2.
C2. So we could have gotten, you know, some other uses along here. So we could have gotten, you know, some other uses along here, obviously it's been vacant all this time, but I think this is a pretty quiet use that is adjacent to those homes there. We're always concerned with, with adjacent use and buffering and sound and noise and smell and just everything, as you, as you would be, you know, as you are as a person living there. So the fact that they're leaving much of that, the trees that are back there, which does cut down quite a bit of, of sound and whatnot, I think this is a pretty good development. And then you did see the elevations, so that even in the wintertime when the foliage is gone, you're not gonna see a, an ugly building. I don't know, did you, do you have that elevation there?
We won't be looking at the front, though.
Pardon?
The front doesn't look bad.
I know, but the, but the west.
But the back is the same.
The west side is, is not bad either.
Anyway.
The west side is this side, so essentially you're saying.
I appreciate your concerns, they were all very valid concerns.
And I think Mr. Eby's available at any time the residents wanna meet with him to go over as they go through the site development stage to meet with you again. I know he had one meeting that two residents showed up, I don't know whether you were at the meeting that you were invited to.
I didn't know it was happening, so otherwise I would've.
Well, I think you were invited, so just give Mr. Eby your name and address and phone number so he can contact you for a future meeting, you know, that you can meet directly one-on-one with him and so he can go over specifics with you. As we, as we move through the process, if this gets passed the planning commission tonight, they'll have to bring a detailed site plan back, which will, you know, be more specific than this, so.
There'll be more work to do if this goes through.
Thank you for listening.
Absolutely, thank you for, for giving us your comments. Sir, come on up.
Hello, my name's Dan Schuler, and I live at 45544 Morningside Road, and I can show you the lot if you have the, the site plan.
Site plan back up there?
But I, I did attend the meeting that the people at Bickford held a month ago, I'm not sure if it was just the adjacent properties that were invited, but my main concern at that time was the, the offset of the trees, because the literature they had sent out included a lot of property they didn't own as, as what they were leaving, and I was concerned, what are you really leaving on this property? And I did receive a letter directly to my concern that said they would be leaving 7, 65 to 70 feet between the property line and the access road. Now, the one I just heard was different.
Well, it depends on where you're at. Down here where the road is closer to the property line, you can see that, that the access, the, the, you know, back where you're at, if you're back here.
So, or you're pointing at just.
What is the distance?
Yeah, I'm sorry, if you're, if you see, this is the closest point, so this is where the narrowest area from the fire lane to the property line is. So if you're here, there's about 65, 70 feet here between the fire lane and the property line.
What is the narrowest, because I was told the narrowest was 65.
Well, the corner of the building is 66 feet to the property line. The fire lane's 20 feet lines, that's about 45 feet from here to here of trees. So, I mean, this could adjust when it gets to site plan, this is conceptual plan, so as they finish, you know, design development and they figure out exactly where that fire lane needs to be, you know, they, you know, things shift a little bit as they get into more detailed engineering, but right now, the, the building is shown at a, at a minimum of 66 feet from the property line to the corner, this corner of the building, okay?
Say how wide the road is.
The road's 20 feet, fire lane is a minimum fire lane requirement, so.
I would assume there would be some clearance of trees on the, on the side of the road.
They only need, they only intend to clear what they need to clear to get the, the fire lane in, so, you know, they'll clear the site up to the limits of clearing, and, you know, we'll know more when they give us a tree removal plan at site plan stage in terms of, of how much, of what is actually there, how big the trees are, how many trees are there, how thick it is, that kind of thing, so. They would prefer not to put the fire lane in and leave it all trees, but our fire marshal needs access around to the back of the building for emergency purposes, so they're gonna have to get some type of fire lane.
My only concern is it leaves a lot of leeway between what you tell the residents and what you actually leave there, you know, it could be quite, quite a big difference, you could take 20 feet on the side of the road.
They're gonna have to dedicate it, probably an easement to Wayne County of at least 25 feet for the drain easement, so at a minimum, they're gonna leave 25 feet, so, because Wayne County's gonna require 25 feet from the center line of the drain probably for a drain easement is what they're showing on the plan, but.
And, and.
As a conceptual plan, that's generally what they're showing, so.
Bickford did respond, you know, I appreciate that, I just wanna make sure there's some kind of commitment.
You speak into the mic, sir?
Oh, sorry. Yes, my, my goal there is just to have some kind of commitment on, on what is gonna be left, rather than just a, you know, this is what we wanna leave, but it may be 10 feet, you know.
Okay, ordinance requires a minimum of 30. Okay, so under, under C2, they have to have a minimum 30-foot landscape buffer, so, you know, notwithstanding that, that's the minimum they have to leave, so.
And we haven't approved this yet, but if we do, then this gentleman could be part of the, the process as well, right, because it's not, it's not a done deal in terms of the details.
Right, I'm not trying to shoot everything down, I'm just bringing up.
We appreciate that.
So the, so the minimum they have to keep is 30 feet.
Right.
Another, another concern I had, which the other gentleman that was at the meeting brought up, I don't believe he's here tonight, but was, was the water, my other neighbor brought up the water as well. The concern here is, if you see the creek, you had one photo that showed the creek a little better. Now, the bank, the bank on the side of the property to be, to be developed is much steeper than the bank going into the backyards of the house, so any excess water is all going into the backyards of the residence in sunflower. And I brought some photos here from Friday, Friday we had some rain, it was not severe, we had a couple hours where it was a really good downpour, but definitely not the worst we've seen, and I don't know who, I should show these too, but.
You're gonna start at the end, though?
You'll see, okay, this is, this is warm, and this is just after that short rain, so, just a couple photos there. But you'll see there's some tall grass in the backyard, and those pictures are from, from my lot, which is, you know, borders the, the planned development. Right behind that tall grass in one of the pictures is where the junction boxes for some of the utilities are, so it gets to those pretty quickly, and then from there it's very, fairly flat going up to the homes, so any additional water going in there is all going into the, into the residents' yards, and, you know, I understand the whole Wayne County is responsible and all that, but I think anytime you pave two or three acres and it's going into one spot, it's gonna make a difference, so. That, that's my biggest concern, is that there's a thorough, again, not shoot everything down, but a thorough look into how, how much that creek can handle, because it seems like it's already at capacity, so. But no, that's, that's all I had, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, sir, come on up.
My name's Gary Farley, I'm the same lot as my wife, just came up here and spoke with you. We're talking about the Wayne County dealing with the water. It is an issue. If you guys get a chance to drive down Hanford Road, so come up Canton Center, turn left, go Hanford Road, and when you get to the bridge, park your car, get out, go look at the front end of the bridge. There's all kinds of debris from flooding, from the water coming down that creek. So I do think it's gonna be a water issue, but I just wanted to mention that because obviously it is a water issue, and there is a lot of flooding going on, and it does come in our backyards. I think you really need to take a long, strong look at this, because it could be an issue. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Unfortunately, we actually have no authority over it. Okay, so, we have to make sure, we work closely with Wayne County, we make sure they understand what the concerns are, if we identify an issue, our public works department works with them, if, if there needs to be some drain improvements done. I mean, Fellow's Creek is actually a natural drain, so it's, you know, it's, it's not only a natural drain, but it's also, you know, it's in part of the county drain system, but it's also a natural creek as part of the Fellow's Creek system. So if there's some issues in, in the creek area, you know, if there's some blockages or whatever, then we can identify those, we'll work with Wayne County to get those blockages removed, if there's, you know, some impediments to the natural flow of water in there that's causing some backups, and, you know, we'll forward those concerns on to our public works department so they can coordinate with the drains department with Wayne County. Wayne County has two different departments to deal with this, one is, you know, you know, the Wayne County Drain Commission, which is kind of a separate office, you know, Wayne County Department of Public Services is the one that does the stormwater permitting, but when you have a natural drain like this, they, they coordinate to make sure that easements together and to make sure that both, both offices' requirements are met. We'll make sure we pass on all of those concerns to the Wayne County Drain Office and to Department of Public Services.
So, in terms of making them aware of the problem that exists now, is that something that we can be involved in, just letting them see like these pictures here?
Well, we'll, we'll let them know of the issues that are, that the residents are currently experiencing so they can evaluate it.
And just to know, and Jeff has already said this, is our obligation is not to make it worse.
Wayne County's ordinance actually specifies, and our ordinance says any grading or stormwater work that you do, you have to have, you can't, you know, there has to be no net impact, you know, to whatever you're doing on the site, so you can't negatively impact any adjacent property with your stormwater, you have to manage it on-site, and as I said, the Wayne County ordinance requires whatever water's going into there, you can't put any more water in faster than what it's currently going in at the agricultural rate for an undeveloped piece of property, so.
Okay, anyone else have comments? Speak now.
Chairman, I move to close the public hearing. Port.
You almost disappointed me. We have a motion to close the public hearing by Commissioner Zubor in support by Commissioner Perkins at 8:03. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, from the commission, Commissioner Perkins?
Nothing.
Nothing at all?
No.
Commissioner Zubor?
It'll be very nice, I don't have any concerns.
Commissioner Engel?
I just have one question, Jeff, the southern part of the property, is that a different owner completely?
Yeah, that owner is actually selling the north part of the property to them, it's owned, been owned by the Canvasser family for many years. Their intent was, is probably to put some type of medical or professional office building on the property to the south, it should be complimentary, we, you know, it could be commercial, it could be retail, you know, but they're retaining that for their use at a later time, so. They'll have to deal with the same issues that Mr. Eby's working with relative to stormwater on this property also. I think at one time they were proposing a, a joint stormwater pond above ground, I think they decided it was going to be more effective to deal with the stormwater in an underground system from a management standpoint.
Okay, thanks, I'll sit, great.
Commissioner Graham Hudek?
A couple things, so I assume, Jeff, I mean, if you could explain maybe a similar situation where the drain has been full like that, what has Wayne County normally done?
Yeah, we have that from time to time, and, and sometimes it's just the way that the drain flows, and it depends on the type of rain event you get, and that's why, you know, you know, there may be, and the discharge on this, since it's a natural drain, DEQ may get involved as part of the discharge permit on this, similar to the one that we've dealt with at Warren and Sheldon Road. Warren and Sheldon is the other one that we dealt with recently for the office complex and daycare center at Warren and Sheldon. You know, that outfalls into a natural drain also. You know, there is some floodplain in those people's yards further downstream, we're hoping that the stormwater improvements will improve the condition, we know that they can't make it any worse. And that's, that's it, the county regulations are designed to make sure that stormwater is controlled and, and, and control the flow of water into the drain so it doesn't create a flooding situation. Now, right now, you know, the water goes into these drains uninhibited, and the only thing that slows it down is actually the grass and vegetation across the ground. Obviously, when you pave a site and you put rooftops, that stormwater has to be managed on the site before it's discharged into the drain, and that's what the whole stormwater system, you know, 25 years ago, we didn't have stormwater regulations, and all of our stormwater went directly into the drains uninhibited. So right now, the stormwater ordinance and stormwater regulations for the county and, and some of the township guidelines requires the stormwater to be held back, it requires it to be filtered, and then discharged at a, a certain rate into the drain, so it handles water quality and, and water quantity. The volume, speed, and, and water quality are the three things that the ordinance manages through the stormwater systems.
I also noticed on Canton Center, there is no, I don't see any foliage, I assume that, that could change. I know with a lot of our other senior facilities, we do have trees and things in front of the main road, so I'm assuming that we'll probably have something like that.
All of this area along, all this area along here is their road frontage landscaping right here, all of this is road frontage.
Sorry, I was looking, okay.
All the berm area here, this is Canton Center over here.
Sidewalk underneath there, then?
Yeah, the sidewalk is right here, and then this is the berm area, the raised berm with all the landscaping on here, so we'll see. You know, their, their site plan is pretty well detailed, so, you know, if this goes through to the board and the board approves the conceptual plans, what you see at site plan, this is pretty close to what you're gonna see when it comes back, because they've, they've gone to a lot of extra work on doing a, a pretty detailed concept plan, so I don't expect things will change a whole lot when they bring it back, it'll just be minor tweaks here and there from an engineering and utility standpoint.
Now, does Bickford also have its own transportation, because I know that we are constrained within our mobility services with seniors and disabled now, I mean, they are saying that it's difficult to get a bus. So, if the seniors from this facility wanna go shopping, or does Bickford have its own transportation?
We do.
Okay.
We do have our own bus.
Okay, and the seniors usually just pay to use it, or?
No, we don't.
Now, is that at all your facilities, because I also have my mother-in-law's in a facility, and she had the, the transportation for a year, then all of a sudden, oh, we can't afford it, so has Bickford been very consistent with keeping transportation?
Been pretty consistent, and we've been adding more, yes, every, every new building gets a, gets a new bus.
So, because, because of the fact that Canton is very much in the habit now of recreation, we have a very, very strong leisure services, we've got the summit, I don't know if you have, have, I'm sure as you were checking Canton out, you, you found out that we have a very much-used recreational system in Canton, plus, you know, with the summit being right at the forefront, so do you anticipate having maybe extra buses taking your seniors to some of these facilities?
You know, quite honestly, mo, most of our residents are frail enough that they probably won't be able to take advantage of some of those services.
Okay.
The ones that would be, would be capable of doing so, that, that we would probably, I'm, I can't say that this is what would happen, but what I would anticipate would happen, that they would have a scheduled time that, you know, Tuesdays and Fridays at 10:00, we go to the summit for exercise, and we do have in-house exercise programs, but yes.
So you know that you'll have at least one.
But their scheduled transportation, we take them to the doctors.
Gotcha.
We take them to, on some outings, you know, go see Christmas lights, those kind of things, so.
And so, so you know that you'll have at least one on-site vehicle?
Oh, yes.
And you'd park that pretty much towards the, the back of the parking lot there?
Probably when I identify on the site plan, we do that, where you're gonna park your vehicle.
Yes, we'll, we'll have to identify that on our site plan.
I don't know if that's what Commissioner Graham Hudek was getting at?
Mostly just the, I mean, lack of transportation, because we did have study sessions with the seniors and disabled, we're in here saying, we, we call, but it's always full.
Uh-huh.
You know, we put a bigger string on that.
We have our own.
Okay, very good.
And it has the lift, it has the wheelchair lift mechanism in the back.
Okay, Richard, I would suggest that you put that in your development agreement, that you'll make, you'll, you'll have a, a vehicle on-site and maintain it on-site, okay? That would be a definite, that would be a benefit to the community to have that, to make sure that we're guaranteed that they'll, they'll have a, a, a vehicle on-site of some, of some size to serve the, the residents, so.
I'd love to show you a picture of it sometime, because it's, it's wrapped, you know, and it's very cheery.
Oh, good.
Good, very good.
You also, so you have assisted living and memory care, but would that mean that after, they could not do assisted living anymore, they would have 24-hour care at the same facility then? Does your facility handle that, or no?
Yeah, all of our care is 24-hour. It's 24-hour, but as they, a lot of assisted living residents, you know, they're frail, maybe they have, they're not, because of arthritic conditions, for a variety of reasons, they are not able to dress themselves adequately, a lot of, a lot of it is memory loss, minor memory loss, you know, they're not really capable of cooking for themselves, they're not as social as they used to be, and so there are, there are different levels of, of deterioration, and once they get to a certain level, then they usually transfer back to the assisted, to the memory care unit, where there's a different programming, different skill sets that are required for those individuals that are unique for the way that they perceive the world.
Or they would, or they would have to move to nursing care.
Or they would, yeah.
Yeah.
And we're a licensed facility, we're licensed by the state, so we, we're always in compliance with state requirements, which are pretty stringent.
So what hospital are you gonna be affiliated with?
Usually, we're not associated with a, a hospital, this is, we're private pay, private.
Have your own doctors there, then?
Well, we take, we take our residents to the doctor. We're not, nor not skilled nursing. We're a step above skilled nursing. We're, we're this, we're this step between person that lives in, by, in an independent living or it lives in an apartment, and when they go to skilled nursing. We're that bridge in between.
Yeah, so they're kind of like a Wal, they're similar to what Waltonwood does. They're two locations. We have two nursing facilities in Canton, Heartland, on Lily Road, and Sienna Healthcare on Geddes Road are the two licensed nursing facilities that we have that would provide that upper level of care when they need more care than what they can provide in an assisted living.
I'm assuming, I've heard some of the residents complaining about the noises with the dumpsters on Canton Center. I'm, I mean, there's a sound ordinance at the business.
Right, yeah, they can't do any parking lot maintenance, any maintenance activity on the site, or any deliveries or garbage pickup before 7:00. If a resident hears activity before 7:00 at any location, they need to call the non-emergency number at Public Safety and let code enforcement know that there's a violation. We have specific requirements in the zoning code that any activity, you know, can't occur before 7:00 a.m., so.
You all set there? Okay, Jeff, could you pull up the elevations? This is, this is real nitpicky. At me? And the, I don't know, oh, okay. So if you look on the, the west rear elevation, towards the left, the, that last window over there, what's, what's on the right of that window? Is that like half a shutter?
Shutter that's not colored in.
Think that somebody forgot to add.
I told you, I told you it'd be nitpicky.
I got it, some serious nitpicky.
I, I spot stuff like this. I, I also saw that north was spelled without an R. Anyway, I, I like this project.
Yeah, see, the shutter's there, it's just not colored in.
I'm just making fun, making fun. I think it's a, a good project myself. I, I, I see no, no harm, no foul in this, and I don't know what somebody wants to do up here. Mister Chairman, I move to recommend approval of proposed minor plan development on the north 3.45 acres of tax parcel 03799-0006717 for Bickford of Canton Senior Living.
Support.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Engel this time, and support by Commissioner Zubor. What a change.
He beat me to the punch.
Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, seeing none. Commissioner Zubor, would you call the vote, please, on this?
Sure. Commissioner Graham Hudek?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Zubor, yes, and Chairman Green?
Yes, okay, so this, this goes forth to recommending to the trustees?
Yeah, this goes for consideration of the plan development and conceptual plan approval to the trustees. You weren't ready to go on the 25th, Richard, you wanna go in August? So be, earliest would be August the 8th, so.
Jeff, stop doing that.
Yeah, I guess we don't need a, we don't need a gavel, do we? Yeah, everybody wake up, okay. Thank you very much for that. Our third item on the agenda tonight is we're considering an exterior, exterior material modification for Marimba Auto. This, this parcel is located south of Michigan Avenue and east of Hagerty Road. We're approving a modification to an already approved site plan. Angela, could you tell us more about that?
Yes, thank you, Mister Chairman. The Marimba folks have come before you to ask for a modification to building materials. This is an industrially zoned location, so typically staff approves the site plan, and the site plan was previously approved. You also saw this about a year ago and granted a modification before. The zoning ordinance requires that the office portion of the building be at least 75% brick, per Article 26. They previously obtained the modification to reduce that to 43% brick and include a combination of brick metal and glass, as you see on the colored rendering here. Previously, a smooth-faced masonry product was proposed. Their request now is to use a split-face masonry product instead. In the analysis, I indicate that they were wanting to change the glass from a blue tint, from a green to a blue tint. They've since changed their mind, and they're not interested in doing that. They're gonna stick with the green. As I said, the colored drawings and the black line drawings were included in your packet. The combination of brick and glass and metal, it hasn't really changed the appearance that you all approved before. It's essentially the same. As I said, the site plan was previously approved. No changes to the site plan are proposed. The building department has already issued a foundation permit, and they've had their pre-construction meeting to go ahead and start their utility work. So what, what we're asking for tonight is a modification to the building materials.
So it's just the brick, the brick change?
On the office face that faces I-275, yes.
These elevations.
And the project, the project representatives are here, and they have brought a colored drawing to share, color, sample board, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Essentially, what we're asking is, this was the smooth, this was the only smooth block, and it's hard to tell with the sticker on it, but it's, it white out, it just becomes kind of funky. So, and have, and this was always split-face accent, so what we'd like to do is have it both be split-faced.
Oh, okay.
Not changing the color or?
So you wanna go?
Add more texture.
That to this?
Technically, it's not brick anymore, it's split-face block, but.
Four by 16.
Gotcha, okay.
Very good, looks nice. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that in.
Yes, and the green, the decision to stick with the green, which we originally approved, we decided we liked it better, we were budget-friendly.
Gotcha. Okay, budget-friendly, I like that, yeah. Had to remember that term.
I have to remember that term, too.
Okay, from the commission, Commissioner Perkins?
I don't have any questions.
Commissioner Zubor?
I agree the split face is gonna look better than the flush.
Commissioner Engel? Mr. Graham Hudek?
Thank you.
Are you declining a comment? No, I think that that change is good. I, I, I think it's, I got no problem.
I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve the request of Marimba Auto to modify exterior material requirements for industrial buildings to substitute split-face masonry for smooth-faced, as was approved.
Oh, you're not gonna add the glass now, right?
No, I'm taking the glass out.
Right.
I was gonna say.
I'm sorry.
To substitute split-face masonry for smooth-faced, as approved at the meeting of, that's not quite worded right, but that, as was approved at the meeting on August 8th, 2016. So we're changing from what was approved in 2016 to split-face block.
Support.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Engel on this change. Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Commissioner Zubor, would you call the vote, please?
Sure. Commissioner Graham Hudek?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Zubor, yes, and Chairman Green?
Yes, and that motion goes forward. Our fourth agenda item for the night is the Grandview Estates Phase 2, where we are actually reviewing a site plan. We were instructed to refer a review, but we're actually reviewing the site plan. So this property is located south of Geddes, between Denton and Barr. Jeff, could you tell us more?
Yes, this is a final site plan for Phase 2 of Grandview Estates. Phase 1, all of the infrastructure and roads are in place, and they are currently building homes in Phase 1, which is the southerly portion of the site.
Yeah, it's a, that's not the map that...
Overall site plan, bring the overall site plan up, the southern, whoops. So essentially, this is the north portion that you're looking at, which is, provides access up to Geddes Road. The, you know, they're, they're underway with, with final permitting for, for Grandview. They should be ready to start construction on that this fall. So we recommend approval. This includes 60, the last 68 lots. The first 105 lots, as I said, are pretty much completed with the construction of the developed portion of the phase. So this would complete the 173 total units within the project. As, as, you know, just to give you a background before, the, the project overall clusters the units, resulting in 40% open space, which is important to the community. Pedestrian amenities, bridges, and pathways will provide access through their common space all the way up to Geddes Road. So it does provide those, those kind of non-sidewalk area pedestrian amenities through their open spaces, through the pond areas, and up through the, through the common area. The improvements recorded on Denton Road and Geddes were completed last fall, both by the developer and by Wayne County with the Geddes Road improvements, or with the Denton Road improvements. They'll be completing the Geddes Road improvements with the completion of the Geddes, the boulevard here in the middle that accesses Geddes Road here. They'll providing what the tapers that the county's requiring for turning motions there at the boulevard entrance along Geddes Road. There aren't a whole lot of driveways in this area other than the individual driveways on the north side for the existing homes. So that's already been approved and permitted by Wayne County. This is situated to align so that the project, you know, the vacant property to the north, the development property to the north can align with this boulevard to create, you know, a proper kind of mid-block intersection between the two intersections. You know, staff has, you know, this is consistent with the overall plan development concept and the preliminary site plan. Staff would recommend approval of the final site plan. At this point, subject to all of the final permits being submitted to township and the financial assurances being submitted to the township before review by the planning commission.
Jeff, is, uh?
By the township board, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Jeff. Is Barr Road gonna be paved?
No. When, when the plan development, plan was issued, they have basically emergency access, and they do have a road that goes out to Barr Road, but it's really not for primary access into the development. The traffic studies show that they wouldn't trip the threshold. All the property essentially on the other side of Barr Road is now agricultural. It's, you know, an active farmland. At some point in time, you know, when the property to the north is developed, there might be a need to pave a portion of it. But at this point, there, the trip, the, the trips, the thousand trips per day threshold was not tripped to require paving of this road. So most of the, the traffic we get along Barr Road is the south end of Barr Road, where the mobile home parks are, at Mott Road, and Mott Road is still unpaved, too. So, so that's where most of the traffic is generated via the mobile home parks that are down on, on Barr and Mott Road.
But they'll still be required to have a sidewalk on the west side, right?
Yeah, they have a sidewalk along, along the roadway.
I couldn't tell from the, from the drawings that I have here.
There's a sidewalk along all their frontage, so. And along, and all along Geddes Road.
Geddes, right. Skipping, skipping the other two properties, right?
That's correct. We'll have to work with those property owners on filling gaps later, so.
All right, from the commission, anyone, did you have, you know, we've already looked at this probably a gazillion times. Any comments, concerns?
Good to me.
There's just, I know right now, some of the residents are having issues with being on dirt roads. And we have some, some of the houses will be on a dirt road here.
And those people wanna, generally wanna be on dirt roads. They've always been on a dirt road, and they wanna be on a dirt road.
No, but we're having that, you know.
If people don't wanna live on a dirt road, why would you buy a house on a dirt road? Then have an issue with it.
Well, I, I think in the past, what we've had, like, for example, on Ridge Road, you've had a subdivision that backed to a dirt road. They don't access the dirt road, but their backyard's backed onto a dirt road. So, but they bought it that way, and there was never the intent to ever pave that portion of Ridge Road. But now that traffic has increased on the road, it causes a lot of dust drift into the backyards. So that's what happens as traffic increases on that road, then it causes that road to, one, be harder to maintain and keep graded, and plus, you know, there's, you know, the issue with dust control. And the township pays the county for additional chloriding of roads for dust control during the season. And that, that, that chloride gets put down on the roads at a certain point in time when the weather's right to put the chloride on the road so it doesn't wash out. You know, I think it's just, it's, it's just one of those things in, in Michigan, is there's a lot of dirt roads, and the county's not gonna pave them because these are considered local roads, and the county doesn't have the federal funds to pave those and to maintain them. So until a, a point in time comes that, that we work with them and we work with the developers to pave those roads, they're not gonna be paved. You know, until they get a point where it can't, they can't maintain them properly from a safety standpoint.
So if the time came where the west side of Barr Road went for development, that might be an issue taken up at that time.
Right. So at, at one point in time, back in 2006, when we had this development, the development on the agricultural property that was coming in, and the property to the north, all at one time, Barr Road was proposed to be paved as part of those three planned developments. But those three planned developments never, ever occurred. So now we're only dealing with basically a portion of one. This isn't even as large as the original PDD that Polte had in 2006. So, I mean, we had almost probably 800 units coming in at that intersection at one point between the three projects. So, you know, when the, when the guy that bought all the farmland started deciding he wanted to farm long-term on the west side of Barr Road, if that property ever comes in, Greg, yeah, then it'll probably trip a threshold for paving of Barr Road at that point, and we'll have to deal with it at that point in time.
But the calcium chloride, that's being used on that road right now?
I'm not sure Barr Road is one of the roads that we calcium chloride or not. We'll have to get, why don't you email Tim and find out which roads we calcium chloride? Because there's certain roads that we do, and certain, it depends on the level of traffic on which ones we calcium chloride. I'm not sure Barr is one of those, because it's pretty remote.
Our road is. How much of it is affected by this, is on the backside of the subdivision? Quarter mile, half mile?
The entry road on, this one comes in with the first phase down here, so. Comes down, what, about a quarter mile, not even a quarter mile. It's probably the half-mile point, so it's probably about a quarter mile down that your access road. But this is a minor access into the subdivision. So there aren't really that, any, very many lots that back directly onto that road at this point. You've got Boyer here in the middle. Other, other than that, most of the traffic is concentrated down near Barr. If you're living in the mobile home parks down there, you're going across, you're not using Barr Road, you're coming across Mott Road to Denton Road to get to Michigan Avenue, or you're going over in a different direction through Ipsy Township, so.
A heavy item on our agenda tomorrow, and it's...
What's that?
Okay.
Dirt roads, I mean, and that's a dirt road. It's just like I'm, I'm looking at a headache, that I'm hoping it doesn't come.
Yeah, just, yeah, I'm not sure whether Barr Road here is one of the, I, I just, I don't know which one, whether that's included on the list of chloriding, so.
Any further discussion? You're good?
I'd like to make a motion. May I?
You may.
I move to recommend approval of the final site plan for Phase 2 of Grandview Estates site condominium on the tax parcels as noted, subject to receipt of all outside agency permits and financial assurances prior to review and approval of the township board. Support.
All right, we're back to normal. We've got a motion by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Perkins. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, seeing none. Commissioner Zubor, would you call the vote, please?
Absolutely. How about Commissioner Graham Hudek?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Zubor, yes, and Chairman Green?
Yes, motion goes forward. Okay.
This'll go to the board when it's ready to go to the board.
All right, so what we have is some work for the staff. Do I have a motion to send Canton Business Park and Westchester 3 to staff for referral?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We've got a public hearing to set for August 7th, the Westchester 3 final PDD. Do I have a motion to set that?
Yes, so moved.
Support.
All in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, item 7, which we added, we need to come up with a committee, an update committee for the master plan.
And what this'll be is it'll be a small committee of planning commission members to work with staff to come up with the kind of recommended, you know, kind of recommended annual actions for updates to the plan, whether or not they be policy changes, map changes. Once, you know, staff just needs input from a smaller group of the planning commission members, and what we'll do is we'll bring that back to a study session with the planning commission to review it as a whole in a public meeting. And then at that time, you guys can make a decision and direct staff then to, you know, advertise, you know, whatever changes we decide upon for consideration at a public hearing later this fall, early winter.
How many people you want?
We need a committee of three people, so generally.
I nominate Commissioner Zuber, Commissioner Engel, and Commissioner Green.
You guys shouldn't have sat in the middle.
Wait a minute, can one person nominate-
I think Julia should do it, because she is so good.
And patient.
She's really, she's really good at making emotions.
And patient and kind.
No, wait, I'm really good at making emotions.
Yeah, no kidding. She's pretty much done it all night.
I was hitting that one.
I think it's against Roberts' rules that you nominate three people all at once.
Is it?
Probably.
Only if somebody doesn't suck it up.
If not, I just amend the Roberts' rules.
It's against Green's rules.
Yeah, that's what it is, yeah. I have no problem being on a committee like that, but I, you know, I want-
What kind of timeframe, or timing?
Looking for maybe a couple hours, once or twice, you know, late afternoon or early morning, you know, in the next month or so, so, you know.
I can't, I-
So, I know that Alan, you know, sat on, you know, Anne Marie, I don't know what your time limitations are in terms of being able to come into the office and going through the stuff, so.
Don, you should be on it because of your background, architecture and so forth.
Alan has a background in architecture, too.
Well, and he could be appointed and put on this committee, because he's not here tonight.
What about Sue?
I think we have to accept, too.
Yeah, what about Sue?
Nah, Sue's got other commitments.
Who would like to volunteer? Who wants to meet with, don't you guys want to meet with me?
So, Chairman Green?
Well, you put it that way, no.
Actually, I would, I would prefer not to if we're, you know, if we have three other people that want to do it. If not, I will-
Does it seem like that?
Yeah, it's looking, it's looking like-
Or you could just have me develop the guidelines, and I'll bring them to the meeting, and we don't need a committee then, so.
What did you say?
I support Jeff's notion.
What did you say, Jeff?
I can bring recommended alternatives based on the study session, and based on what I've worked up, and bring them to the meeting, and present them in a study session, and we can all do it together.
I'm with Craig on that.
I propose that we do it Jeff way.
Yep.
I like the committee, I like the committee. I think Don would be-
You're gonna be on the committee?
Well, mine is, I work in the day. If you want to do it at night, but I'm on three committees already, so.
I like Jeff way, though.
I don't think it'll be very extensive. I think, basically, the things that we're gonna be looking at are things that we talked about in study session. We've got the area up in the Coppernick Road area in terms of a mapping area, and then we've got some changes to the mixed-use guidelines that we need to straighten out for the Michigan Avenue and Lot's Road quarter. And, you know, I've already kind of got some of that drafted out based on everybody's input.
That's this map that I have here, right?
Sort of. Well, that's one issue that the developer's dealing with, that they need is to do something on it, but not necessarily that, so.
Okay, so if we-
So, I mean, if you're comfortable with me developing the recommendations and bringing them back to you, and then you can, then we can always have additional discussion in the meeting for additional changes you want to make. But what we need to do is, in order to move this forward, at some point in time, I need your authorization to go ahead and advertise changes.
So, how would you give us, how would you give us your recommendations, Jeff?
I would, we would just have a study session. We'd have like a second meeting of the month and have a study session, and I would do a presentation.
Would that just involve us and you?
Well, you know, it'd be a public meeting.
It has to be public, yeah.
Yeah, it's-
So, you would, you recommend separating that, not an agenda addition to the regular meeting?
We would just have a separate work, yeah, we would have, instead of a joint session with the board, we'd just have our own study session.
I kind of like that.
Yeah.
You like that?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, because then Julia has to come.
Okay, so do you want to have, do you want to establish a study session then in August?
That sounds good to me.
For the third Monday in August?
Yeah, let's do that. About to stop your hemming and hawing, let's go.
That would be the 21st of August, so.
Put it on your calendar right now.
21st of August would be the study session date if we want to do it in August.
You wanted to be on the planning commission.
I'm here.
Okay, do I hear a motion to do it that way?
Study session on August 21st.
Okay, we've got a motion and support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I like the committee.
All right, it's a done deal.
Will Connie send out like a calendar reminder or something?
I said no, I'd like the committee, so I want to-
Okay, you're gonna put that on the record?
She made.
Okay. Okay, I'm comfortable doing that. There, I mean, this is an interim, you know, adjustment to the plan. I don't think there's, I don't think there's a whole lot, we need to do a lot of the stuff that was in. The study session is already incorporated into our ordinances in the plan anyway. If you guys want to do me a favor, go through your copy of the master plan. If you don't have one, it's online, and kind of, just kind of go through some of the strategies and objectives in the ordinance. If you see an additional strategies in there that we need to think about, you know, send me, send me an email.
Do you want those ahead of time, or do you want to wait for that meeting?
Do it as soon as you have to. If there's anything that you want me to look at and bring to the study session, so I can evaluate it, maybe come up with some additional policy language, or some additional objectives, or whatever we need to do, I can do that, and I can draft them up, and then we can consider those, at least in draft form at study session, and talk about them, so.
Okay. I make a motion to adjourn.
Wait a minute.
Oh.
No, that was, anything else to add?
That's all I got, so.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I want to stay all night. Okay, thank you.